To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you everyone for getting out on a wet night to join us in the Monday, September 15th, Bryan City Council meeting. Gentlemen, you've been presented with two sets of minutes for September 2nd and the 12th. Are there any addition corrections need to be made to those minutes?
Well, hearing none, I will briefly accept them as presented.
I'll second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Okay, also now we have the Clerk Treasurers' Report, so Pat, would you review that for us, please?
Yes, you've been presented with the Clerk Treasurers' Report for the month ending August 31st, 2014.
Well, it looks like it balances.
It's always a good thing.
It is. With that, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Okay, next we have Hearing of Public Concern. Again, that's a time set aside for anybody who wants to address council. It's not on the agenda, and I see no one, so we will continue. Now we have some employee status changes, an employee status change in the Attorney's Office. So Rhonda?
Yes, Tanya Belts is completing her first year of probation with my office. That's going to be completed September 30th, 2014. She has been a wonderful asset to our office, has been very quick to learn new things, very articulate, and very good with the public, and I'd ask that you would recommend her to be removed from probation to permanent status.
Should we do all those together?
Well, I just, I thought the other ones were all police business, so I can just do them together.
That's good, that's good. Okay, well, I'll do this, Tommy. I'll make a motion to approve this one for Rhonda.
Okay.
Second.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. The next ones are within the Police Department, so Chief Wilds, you want to address those?
Basically, these will be status changes. We want to welcome him. This is his first day on the job. He was sworn in at eight o'clock this morning, so.
Pressure's on. (laughing).
All right. The first change request is involving Officer Mario Rodriguez. He has been employed full-time with Bryan Police Department as of October 2nd, 2014. He will have completed his eight years of service with the Police Department. And according to the contract between the City of Bryan and the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association, his wage is to be adjusted to $21.79 per hour, per Article 31 compensation.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, and we'll just do all three of them if you just want to, just.
The second request is involving Jeff Arnold. As everybody knows, he just retired. He is asking to be appointed to the Bryan Police Department Reserve Unit, effective today, September 15th, 2014, and the compensation will be $1,000 if he completes the minimum 96 hours of service per year.
Gotcha. Okay.
That'll give us some more help at games and so forth, and he will also continue in his berangue there on our deer situation, so we'll get that.
Okay. And the last change request is involving Paul Zwodny, who has been reassigned from Captain's position to patrol officer on the road. This is effective September 15th, 2014, and in accordance with contract between the City of Bryan and the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association, his wages should be adjusted to $24.14 per hour, per Article 31 compensation.
Okay. Gentlemen, Rhonda?
I'll make a motion to approve them as they are.
Okay.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Next we have Alert 86. So, okay, Chief Siders are going to give that presentation?
As a lot of yous probably heard, we have a new warning system in Williams County called Alert 86. And for those of you who still have landline phones at home, you are automatically registered with Alert 86 based on your home phone. Now, with that, you are only going to receive tornado warnings. Any of the other options that are available on Alert 86, you will not receive unless you go to the website and register. If you go to the cityofbrian.com website, our website for the city, and you scroll down on the left-hand side, you'll see the banner there that says "Alert," and it's Alert 86 for Williams County. You click on it, and you'll be redirected to the Alert 86 website, and unfortunately, I have to sign into the Wi-Fi here in the Don North Building. Let's see if I can make this happen. Okay. So you're going to come to this website here. This website, it is a basic one, two, three-step situation to register. Just go down here and click, where it says "Click Here," and you'll be redirected one more time to where you get an opportunity to pick a username, and I'm going to keep it simple. So we're just going to walk through the process, okay? And then it's going to ask you for your first name, your last name, and then it's going to ask you for a six-character password, or eight-character. So I've done that, and then it's going to ask you to confirm that. And then it's going to ask you a security question, in case for some reason you would forget your username or password. It's going to ask you for a security, and you get an opportunity to pick any one of the security questions that you want, and then you type in the answer, and in the event that you forget your username or password, it will ask you for, it will give you the question, and then you have to apply, apply that answer. Let me fix this here real quick. And then it's going to ask you to put in a website, or email address, and then it asks you to accept the terms of use. And after you've done that, it doesn't like my password, I guess, let's try that again.
That's the biggest thing, is to remember the password. Your old password. One of many.
Yeah. There we go. Now we can create the account, and we move forward. These things are particular. Now, at this point, it takes you to another page, and it asks you, how do you want to be contacted? And you can move these up and down as you want, so you know, if you wanted your home phone to be first, you can click this all the way up to the top to where your home phone is first, and then you can add the number for your home phone. And then if you want a text message to come to your cellphone, again, you would just add that in. And if you want it to come to your cellphone, again, you do the same thing. If you want your email, and you get to go right down through the list. There's 10 options here. If you want your, if you have a second cellphone in your family, and you want that phone to be contacted as well, or multiple email addresses, you can list those here as well. If you want to be contacted at work, you can be contacted at work, and you'll get a phone call through work. Once you've selected all of those, then you just click "Save" and "Continue," and then it's going to ask you to add a location, and typically, a lot of folks will do a home, and then where their address is. All right, and then it's going to ask you to verify the address. So again, you click the button, it brings up a map, and it puts a pin where it thinks you're located. There's a couple of them here, a couple of options. I want the first one, and if none of them look right, you can click that button, and it'll start all over again. So I'm going to select that one, and I want to say that this is my location. Now, you can add multiple locations. So if you want another address somewhere else, you can add those addresses as well. In another town, another state, you can add those addresses as well. Once you're done with that, and you're happy with that, you save that, and we move on to the next area. This is where you get an opportunity to select what alerts you want to receive, and presently under the community alerts, there are eight of them. We have fire information alerts, public meeting alerts, so it's just council meetings, BPA, et cetera, power outages, if you want to know whenever there's a power outage in the city, you can select that, water outages, snow level emergencies, traffic information or closures, if the street department or city engineers have to shut down a street, you can get that information, public works alerts, if our water goes bad, sort of thing, and then law enforcement alerts. So you have those opportunities to select any one of those. If you want all eight of them, just click at the top of the box where it says "Community Alerts," and it'll automatically select all eight of those. Then under the weather hazards, you have a pretty good option here. There's actually 22 winter weather options that you can have. You can have anything from blowing snow to sleet, to winter storm watch, weather advisory, fog advisory. Again, you have an opportunity to select those.
I think I ought to do all of them.
I'm sorry?
I think I ought to do all of them.
You ought to do all of them, yeah.
Phone will be ringing all the time.
Our phone will be ringing all the time. Well, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, okay.
And then for flood, there's six. If you want a flood warning or a flash flood warning, you can select those. Again, for wind, there's only the one. If you want a high wind warning, you can get a phone call for that, or a text message. Severe thunderstorm warning, if you'll notice under severe weather, that tornado is already selected. You do not have the option to unselect that. That was part of the deal when we put this together, that this would be an automatic. So that one's already selected for you. You have the option, though, if you want thunderstorm watches, warnings, or advisories, or tornado watches, or tornado advisories. So you can select what you want. If you make a mistake, you can select off of it. Some other ones you can get for frost warning, freeze warnings, heat warnings, wind chills, and then hail and lightning. Now, if you don't want to be bothered when you're sleeping, you can click this box over here that says "Weather and Hazard Alert Setting." You can click the box, and you can tell it what time you don't want to be bothered. So between, in this case, 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM Eastern Daylight Time, you will not be bothered. Your phone or your text messages nor email will be sent, any information in regards to weather alerts. If you don't mind being woke up at zero dark 30, then you can leave that off, and it'll call you 24 hours a day with whatever you've got checked. Once you've completed that, you can save and continue. Oops, my session timed out. I took too long. All right, and once we've done that, there's another thing that it's going to do, and it's going to ask you in regards to your information. If this happens to be, if you're registering at a business, these are the businesses that are currently listed. We can change those and add more as time goes on. If you have any skills that might be of help during a natural disaster or a major disaster, you have an opportunity to select what's here. Again, if there's additional ones that we want to put in later on, we can. And if you have any special needs, those will go here as well. Once you have those in place, you can click "Save." Then it brings you to this page. This is actually your profile for Alert 86. And if you want to change any of this information at any time, you can. You simply have to log in with your username and password. It'll bring you to this page, and then at that point, let's say I wanted to change some of my alert subscriptions, I can go in there, and I can select what I want. And then I can click "Save," and now I've got all of those. So you can go in there at any time, and you can select what you want, deselect what you want. Once you get done with that, you click "Save," and then, once you're finished, you log out, and now your phone will ring for any one of those. So here's probably a page that you'll want to save in your favorites, because this is how you get in and out of Alert 86. We have cards that have been, the county has had made up, and they're out there. And Chief, what's the phone number that's on that card? Okay. That is the phone number that will appear on your caller ID, if you have caller ID on your phone. That's what will show up. There's also a text number that will show up for your texting. You can actually change that to Alert 86, and put that then in your contacts list for text messages. So it's up and running. We've already made some changes to the weather section. Initially, all we had was this severe thunderstorm warning, tornado warning, but we've added a whole bunch more. It is up and running. There have been some notifications. It's been more in the northern part of the county when we had the last round of thunderstorms. We haven't had any alerts in the southern part of Williams County. We did have some flood warnings, but a lot of folks didn't have that checked because we didn't originally have that on the list. So if you've been registered with Alert 86, go back in and check those weather alert warnings, and see if there's anything new that you want to be notified of.
Will that, every time there's an update or change, it will ring or notify you?
No.
For example, Level 3.
Okay, Level 3 snow emergency. If there's a change in that, that can be sent out, yes. Anytime there's a change in the snow emergency levels.
And if I heard you right, with this system, I could put in a location, even though they're not a member of the Alert 86 system, and they will still notify me if there's...
They will notify you that, for example, like with you, sir, for County. You can put that address in, and for like severe weather, for thunderstorm warnings and tornado warnings, if that location ends up in the polygon, you will get a notification for that.
Okay. Thank you.
If your name is in the phone book, if you have a regular landline, you're automatically in for tornado.
Tornadoes, correct. But you're not automatically in for anything else. You still have to go in, register, and select the other items from the list.
Do all those things ring at the same time, if you've signed up for your cellphone and your home phone? Will they all ring, or does one?
It starts at the top of the list and works its way down. There's another option that you can opt in for, and that is whether or not you want it to stop after it answers the first one. So let's say it calls home, and you've got an answering machine. It does not accept the answering machine, because when it calls, it asks for a prompt. You actually have to push a button on the phone to acknowledge the message. And at that point, if you acknowledge the message, it can stop. It won't ring your cellphone, it won't ring anything else. Now, if you don't check that box, then it'll continue to move on right on through, which is nice for folks that have multiple cellphones. Maybe the other phone is one of the high school kids, or somebody else in the family that it just keeps ringing right on down through, so that the entire family gets notified at that point.
Now, the school is still separate. They still have their system going there.
Correct.
On that, yes.
Yeah, they're still on their Honeywell system, yes. There has been some discussion that possibly the school maybe will come back and, or will come on board with Alert 86, and then we'll have the school portion along with this. So that's how easy it is, how quick it is, to get logged on and signed up. So if anybody has any questions about how to sign up, you can contact us at the Fire Department. We'll be happy to walk you through it and get you signed up. You can also call Williams County Central. They'll help you get through it if you're having some problems. So you can call that 419-633-5098. That phone is not monitored all the time, but it does have an answering machine on it, and somebody will get back to you and give you a call and help you get signed up. So that's how simple it is. I guess I'll open it up to any other questions.
Now, the Hope County's on this now, right?
That is correct, sir.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is our August, I'm sorry, our October 6th meeting will be now at 5:30 due to the Ready, Set, Relax Night.
I set that at 5:30, Mr. President. And do I understand, Rick, that you will not be at that meeting?
I will not be able to make that meeting.
So if any of you would want to start that sooner than 5:30, we could do that also. Past years, we've gone at 5:30, and we try to get out, so you can go on to the Ready, Set, Relax stuff that the school is sponsoring, so. But if you want it before, it makes me no difference. The people that are here working, does it make you a difference?
I'd rather have it sooner.
You'd rather have it sooner? They're here, they're out at 4:30. It's up to you, folks. You're the ones with schedules.
I'm open.
Mr. Wright, you would be the one...
They can't be the only one. You know, at this point, I don't know, but if you want to schedule 5 o'clock, I'll just make it work.
Let's see that. We can just leave it at 5:30, and then you can let us know, and then we can change it, can't we, or not?
Let's go ahead, and if Rhonda would rather do, 5 o'clock's what you'd like, Rhonda?
Yeah.
Let's go ahead and set it at 5 o'clock, and I'll notify the mayor otherwise, but at that far out, I should be able to adjust my schedules.
Okay.
5 o'clock.
All right, well, the only thing else, or the remaining thing, is executive session for acquisition of property and employment of personnel, so I'll go...
Need a motion, I'll make for 6.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
I'll make that motion. Is that what you're saying, about the 5 o'clock? I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
There we go.
Okay, I'll go around the room, and Leroy, do you have anything for us?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Does it ring?
Chief, anything? Chief Falls?
Nothing.
Okay. Chief Siders? All righty. You're not a chief, are you? Well, you have Indians with you.
Yeah.
Okay. You have anything for us, Mr. Inkstrom? Okay. Mr. Hoopie?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Mr. Wright?
Nothing, for me.
Mr. Reed?
Nothing.
Nothing for me.
Okay. Ms. Pat, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Rhonda?
Yes, you have up on the agenda notice, on October 9th, 2014, at 5:30, in the New Era Auditorium as a community forum. This is something that the judges, probation departments, prosecutors, and other members of the community have put together to educate the public on the dangers of opiate usage and other street drugs, and as well to educate the parents, what to look for, what signs to look for. And so we just encourage everyone, from the schools, parents, students, public, to please attend that community forum, so that we can stop some of the problems that we've been having. We're seeing several overdoses in Williams County, and we are trying to do anything we can to curb this problem. The following day, on October 10th, is going to be a street spurts program, and there are actually two sessions the next day. It's the same presentation, one in the morning and one in the afternoon, but it's a more intensive educational program to follow up this community forum. Thank you.
Again, where's that held?
The New Era.
New Era, okay.
Okay. Mayor, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things. We'll get it up here, if it's working here. It didn't come up. November 1st is the, we're getting a lot of calls on that, when it's trick or treat. Saturday, November 1st, 3 to 5, is our McDonald Rough Ice Arena part of it, and then Saturday, November 1st, 2014, is the 6 to 7:30 is our treat hour. So that is there. And what I was trying to pick up, it doesn't seem to want to come up, is our garbage bags. Many of you have had an opportunity already for picking up your garbage bags. First of all, you should have gotten a card mailed from the Treasurers' Office that you're to go to the Street Department and pick up your garbage bags. And there's two more chances to do that. Wednesday, September 17th, from 3 to 7, and Wednesday, September 24th, from 3 to 7. So you should have a card, sign it, take it to the Street Department, and you get three rolls of garbage bags. If you didn't get a card, come to the Clerk Treasurers' Office, get a card, and make sure you get those bags, because after that, there's, I think they're 1250 roll, so you want to make sure you get your garbage bags. Two more chances there to get that done. Also, in your packet, I put a little letter to the council that we'll be looking at next time. The Joint EPA Solid Waste Management District for Defiance, Fulton, Pauling, and Williams is ready to approve their five-year plan. And already in the paper, there's this 30-day comment period on this plan, and then a public hearing will be held on the 23rd on this plan, and then the board will approve it on the 23rd, and then it has to go back to all the councils and trustees, everybody in the four-county area to approve the five-year plan. Now, included in this plan is to collect the $2 per ton. They're calling it a designation fee, and this has already been passed July 28, 2014, by the EPA and, or the Solid Waste District, and that will start, October 1st, we'll be starting to collect that $2. we'll be starting to collect that $2 per-ton fee that is automatically set to make sure that our waste, solid waste is going to hold steady, and that the landfill is going to hold steady with the amount of tonnage that we take out there. City of Brian has not had any kind of refuge raises for eight years. I think it was in December 26, 2006, we had to look at passing a little raise, rate raise. So, at the next meeting, we're going to have to look at the tonnage we sent out there, see how close... That's an enterprise fund, how close we're running, and we're going to have to set one. We're gonna have to offset... I'm not saying $2, but we're gonna have to offset this tonnage fee at our next meeting, decide what we want to do. So, I know Lori's putting together and Tyson some figures on what it does cost. There's more than just the tonnage going out there. It's the increased gas cost, and the increase of it, and the lowering of everything we're recycling is costing the landfill to go up. So, we've been...
Fuel costs.
Yes. We've been at $14 and $1,850 now since 2006. So, we might have to look at a little bump in there at the next meeting. So, just wanted to draw that to your attention at this time. So, that's all I have.
Okay. The only comment I want to make is in regards to this presentation that our attorney, Ms. Fisher, talked about, is this at New Era, this drug awareness. And I guess you always look at Bryan, Ohio, and it's not a Toledo or a Chicago or Detroit or something like that. So, it's the same old thing. Ah, it doesn't happen in Bryan and things like that. But a couple of weeks ago, I experienced a, in my neighborhood, an overdose. And it wasn't a pretty sight. And so, I'm just saying that it's here, it's real, it's dangerous, and it's deadly. And so, I think we need to be very aware, very conscious of what's going on in our own city. So, I think this could be a very good presentation and maybe open some eyes up to not only me, but a lot of people. So, with that said, what we're gonna do is just take a short recess, and then we'll go into executive session. So, thank you all for coming.